We're all set.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we are on Indigenous land. The traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish People who have lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase Native communities. We commit to identifying racist practices and to strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. Welcome to the March 14th meeting of the Seattle Planning Commission. All of our meetings are open to the public, but please note the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders, who in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to appropriate elected officials. Today's meeting is a hybrid with some members participating remotely while others are in person in the Boards and Commissions' Room at Seattle City Hall. We operate by some Color Brave Space norms, and I would like for one of our commissioners to choose and briefly speak to one of those norms that you feel has particular relevance to today's agenda, and I believe Nick was going to do that for us today.
Okay, so for today's Color Brave Space norm, I am picking practicing examining racially biased systems. I think this is apt for today's conversation as we do our policy review and begin to analyze data and understand the ways that the periodic update is redressing the legacy of redlining and racially restrictive covenants that have shaped Seattle to this day.
Thank you, Nick. Well said, and apropos, if there are no amendments or modifications to these norms, I suggest we agree to them by acclamation. Great. So on the agenda today, we are dedicating our meeting to sharing initial thoughts, and they are initial. We've only had the plan for nine days on the Draft One Seattle Plan that came out on March 5th last Tuesday. Our first order of business, though, is to approve the minutes, and I would ask for a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
Rick moves.
From the February 8th minutes. Okay.
And Michaela.
Julio seconds.
Michaela and Julio. Thank you very much. Okay, are there any amendments to the notes? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And abstentions? Great. Those meetings are approved. So, and some business items. The next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is next Thursday, March 21st, at 7:30 in the morning from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. This meeting will be held online using the MS Teams platform as all our 7:30 meetings are. Our next full Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 28th, from 7:30 to 9:00. That meeting will also be held online using the MS Teams platform. All right, I'd like to hand it over to Vanessa now.
Thank you, David. As David noted, this is a hybrid meeting. We have two Planning Commissioners joining staff here in the Boards and Commissions' Room of City Hall, as well as the member of the public. Thank you for coming. And the rest of the Commissioners are joining on the Teams call. If you would like to be recognized to speak, please put your name in the chat. Please refrain from putting substantive comment in the chat as members of the public do not have access to the chat. I will be reading public comment that was emailed to me shortly after our Commissioner introductions, and we will also be taking public comment at the end of the meeting. I'm going to read the six that I received thus far after introductions, and if there are others that care to provide public comment at the end of the meeting, we'll do that. So back to that, I will ask David to start the introductions, and as part of the introductions, if you all could please indicate your day job and if desired, any disclosure regarding your forthcoming comments on this topic during the meeting, that if you want to make it clear that they do not represent your employer. So that would be helpful. And after you introduce yourself, please call on another Commissioner, and David will kick us off.
Yeah, I'm David Goldberg. I'm co-chair of the Seattle Planning Commission. He/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village, soon maybe to be the Wallingford Urban Center, and I work for the Washington State Department of Transportation as a community liaison and ombudsman, and I would like to pass to my co-chair, Michaela.
Good afternoon. Michaela Dafford, she/her pronouns. I work in affordable housing policy and planning for King County, and in that capacity, I manage a team that is reviewing and commenting on comprehensive plans, including Seattle's, and I have recused myself from that review. And any comments that I provide in today's meeting are my personal thoughts and opinions, not on behalf of my employer. And I live in Capitol Hill, and I will call on Monica.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I work for King County Play Equity Coalition in policy and advocacy and organizing for equity in youth, sports, physical activity, and play. And I live in the Central District. And I will pass it to Jamie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jamie Strubel. I use she/her pronouns, and my day job is I'm the Director of Climate Action and Resilience for the Nature Conservancy in Washington. And then I also, as a community consultant, supported the combined community of Seattle King County, which was one of the community-based organizations that got a grant to do community engagement for the comp plan update. And then I live in the 130th Station area. And I will pass to Michaela.
Yes.
Hello. My name is Caleb Tolday. He/him pronouns. I live in the Central District, and I work at Rainier Scholars doing leadership development programming with our middle and high school scholars. I'll pass it to Rose.
Hi, all. I am Rose Loucheilowitz. And my pronouns are they/them. I am a professional wetland scientist in my day job, and I do a lot of permitting work as part of that. And then I live in the Lipton Springs neighborhood. No disclosures that I can think of. I'll pass to Matt. Oh, wait, employer, Jacobs Engineering. There we go. Okay, now.
My name is Matt Hutchins. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle. I am an architect, and with an emphasis in affordable and all sorts of housing. So I think, oh, Nick, I think you haven't gone yet?
Yes. So my name is Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I also live in West Seattle for my day job. I'm the Code and Policy Director at the City of Bellevue. So a real emphasis with my division on implementing regulations. And Rick?
Greetings, everyone. I'm Rick Muller. I use he/him pronouns. I live just north of the Wallingford Urban Village in what may well become a neighborhood center. I'm an architect and professor-in-chief of the Department of Architecture at the UW. And I will pass it to, how about Monica? Is Monica up there?
She's gone.
Huh? She's gone?
She's gone.
Oh, Julio!
Sorry.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julio Sanchez. My pronouns are he/him. When in Seattle, I live in the Capitol Hill neighborhood, and as of now, I just finished working with the Department of Health, doing some consulting work, evaluating grants that community organizations have presented. I do not believe I have any disclosures to make.
Thank you, Julio. How about Deanna?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns, and I live in the Capitol Hill neighborhood. I am a multimodal transportation planner, and for my day job, I work at WSP. And to mention, just views are my own, not those of my employer.
Thank you, Deanna. Zeo, I believe you are in the middle of work, listening in. At the time that you can, introduce yourself. We'll make it after that. And I believe Lauren Squires-- oh, you can. Great, go ahead.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, so I'm Zeo Alvarez. My pronouns are she/they. I'm a designer at Element Architects, a firm downtown, and I live in White Center Highland Park in an area that's identified as a high displacement risk in the plan.
Thanks, Zeo. We may be joined by Lauren Squires, another Commissioner. She's looking for Wi-Fi access right now. So when she joins the call, we'll take a pause and allow her to introduce herself. At this point, we'll introduce staff. Olivia?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
Hi, all. I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
Lastly, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon to those listening in. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Executive Director for the Planning Commission. With that, I will turn it back over to David, our co-chair, who will tee us up for public comments that I will then read.
Great. So at all of our meetings, we provide time for public comment, but a reminder again that we don't hold public hearings, and we are an advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders, and they make the actual decisions. Individuals who make comments to the Commission should remember that the mayor and city council will be the ones to make the decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to those officials. And I will now turn to Vanessa to read the comments that we have received.
Thanks, David. The first comment. There is only one Seattle that this plan is good for, and that's the Seattle of wealthy homeowners who want to freeze their neighborhoods in amber and make it impossible for newcomers or even long-term, middle-class residents to live here. The city desperately needs to completely end all single-family zoning everywhere, full stop. The practice was classist and racist in its inception, and while intentionally current NIMBYs might simply be snobs or even merely weirdo fans of old-kit architecture, in effect, their preferred policies produce the same results. As things are now, the current undersupply of housing versus demand means that rents and mortgages are excessive for a huge portion of the city. Do we really want to be a city where no one making less than $100,000 feels remotely comfortable? Allowing apartments and condos to be built everywhere will make Seattle a more affordable egalitarian city. Greater density will also make it a more productive, efficient, and best by far, interesting city. I realize there are people who like Seattle just the way it is and wish to keep it that way. Thing is, change is inevitable. Cities grow or either stagnate. We need to grow. Thank you, Nate Lunsor. Second comment. I'm writing as a Seattle resident to express my great disdain for the new One Seattle Plan. In short, building only 100,000 homes over the next 20 years will not be enough to support the influx of new jobs and residents, as even acknowledged by the report itself. The Commission urgently needs to push for real upzoning in all parts of the city, not the bare minimum, and not only in downtown Belltown, Capitol Hill, and stop its intention to limit building heights due to tree coverage and to protect the views when people are slowly not being able to even afford living near such views. It is a false choice. New York knows this. Barcelona knows this. Seattle must know it too, or there will come a day where I won't be able to afford to send this comment as a Seattle resident. That is from Ethan McHugh. Third comment. The draft comprehensive plan just released is beyond dismay. It makes me feel ashamed of my city. It proposes less than half the housing we know we need to accommodate over the next 20 years. It allows neighborhoods reserved for wealthy, single-family homeowners to remain that way. It pays lip service to writing the discriminatory zoning wrongs of the past while its details promise to perpetuate them. It promises housing near parks and on frequent transit corridors while offering precious little of it, especially near our grandest parks. It offers a plan to limit displacement that's all but guaranteed to do the opposite. It gallingly pretends that bare minimum compliance with state housing law represents bold upzoning. It calls itself the One Seattle Plan while its maps clearly show two segregated Seattles. Worst of all, it guarantees that the humanitarian crisis of homelessness in our city and region will not only persist but dramatically worsen. It is not bold. It is not just. It is not compassionate. It is not serious. It is cowardly, and it is feckless. Thank you. Kyle Jacobson. Next public comment. Dear Planning Commission, as we watch our city skyrocket out of affordability due to our lack of housing supply, I urge you to convince the planners and mayor to drastically improve the Seattle comp plan. 100,000 homes is not enough. In 2044, today's kids will be adults, and they will be priced out of the city they're growing up in. This is a critical moment to meet the housing crisis with a plan that goes beyond bare minimums. Please legalize sixplexes citywide without any stipulation on affordability, design requirements, or FAR restrictions, and let us build ourselves out-of-housing debt modern planning created before it's too late. That is from Ryan DiRamo. Next comment. As an architect in Seattle, serving affordable housing developers over many years, I applaud the city for adopting most of the new zoning rules for single-family lots in Seattle. However, one key shortfall is the FAR, that's floor area ratio, allowed. Washington State Model Ordinance suggests an FAR of 1.2, but the city proposes 1.9. Consider a 40-foot lot wide, which is very common in Seattle. A 40-by-100-foot lot is 4,000 square feet. FAR of 0.9 allows for 3,600 square foot of living space. For four dwellings on such a lot, each one is limited to 900 square feet. If the FAR is increased to 1.2, then at least 1,200 square feet of living space would be allowed. This is much more workable. On a 50-by-100-foot lot, as demonstrated in many of the city's examples, an FAR increase from 0.9 to 1.2 would allow for four dwellings on a 5,000-square-foot lot to grow from 1,125 square feet to 1,500 square feet. These dwelling sizes are much more likely to meet the housing needs of homebuyers. Given that the lot coverage allowance of 50% and building height of three stories will address the bulk of the building, the FAR limit will not be a significant factor in how the impact will be felt on existing development. Thank you. Joe Giampietro. Next comment. Long ago, it was normal for a U.S. city to grow by tens of percent or more each decade. From 1900 to 1910, Seattle grew almost 200% from 80,000 to 235,000. While some of that came from annexation of nearby communities, those communities were themselves undergoing similar growth. This was not achieved through careful planning and management, but from a broadly permissive environment to build what was desired within the bounds of safety and sanitation. Much of this construction remains dense, livable, and attractive by modern standards. However, in living memory, most of Seattle has been restricted to single-unit detached zoning, rendering this type of growth impossible. I'm very pleased to see the One Seattle Plan call for triplexes, fourplexes, et cetera, in these newly designated urban neighborhoods. I'd just like to see it go even further. It is regrettable that moderate-scale housing will remain restricted to specific areas typically around arterials. On foot, these arterials serve as noisy six-lane moats, making travel more difficult and unpleasant, while areas with less car traffic are restricted to the lowest-density housing. It would be much better to allow a more expansive mandate to build moderate-scale housing throughout as much of the city as is feasible, including urban neighborhoods. It seems unfair to cluster apartment dwellers who are less likely to use a car around the externalities of car ownership. Thank you, Austin Grimsman Ballard, resident. I have one final public comment. Hi, we are supporting the missing-middle housing plan. We want to build the fourplex on our land in Seattle on the zoning NR3. Thank you very much. Sincerely yours, Duke Pham. That concludes the public comment received thus far.
Thanks, Vanessa. And thank you, everybody who commented. There were some really thoughtful comments, and it's great to see people engaged on this very important topic for the future of Seattle. So over the last nine days, we Commissioners have had the opportunity to start our review of the Draft One Seattle Plan. And now our staff is going to facilitate a working session for the next hour, 40 minutes, or more if needed, for us all to share our initial observations and comments on selected sections of the draft. But realistically, this is the beginning of a conversation after a very early review, and it will continue over the next several weeks as we work together to develop a thorough and thoughtful comment letter on this important document. Now, Vanessa, will you help guide us through the next bit of discussion?
Certainly. Thank you very much. Just want to reiterate the fact that this is the first time the Planning Commissioners have had a chance to gather and share their initial thoughts on the Draft One Seattle Plan that was released March 5th, so nine days ago. Today's meeting is not a comprehensive overview of the draft plan, but rather an opportunity for you all to hear from each other your initial thoughts and questions for the group to answer as the Commission develops a comment letter on the draft. I encourage members of the public listening in to attend one of the open houses sponsored by the Office of Planning and Community Development to learn more about the draft plan and share your thoughts with city staff. In fact, there is one tonight that starts at 6 o'clock that I will be attending. It is at the Loyal Heights Community Center. You can see the rest of the open houses listed on the slide, and there is a web address at the very bottom of the slide for those listening in. If you go to that website, you'll see these listed again. So for this afternoon, we have just under two hours set aside for the session, and we may run over. Our last item on the agenda is a very high overview of selected portions of the draft DIS. It's not particularly substantive and something that we can follow up with Commissioners and members of the public afterwards. So my suggestion is that I help monitor the time along with David as chair, and we take the time that we need. Just to note that the Planning Commission was divided themselves into groups of three or four, or four or five, so subquorum, to review the growth strategy. So everybody reviewed the growth strategy, and then individual groups reviewed the housing and transportation element, the land use element, the climate environment, parks and open space elements, and public health. You'll see that on the agenda that's on the screen in front of you. So for many Commissioners, they will be hearing from their colleagues, from their fellow Commissioners, about a part of the plan that they may not have had a chance to review yet. I'd like to remind and ask Commissioners to please state your name before making a comment or even making your presentation, so that members of the public listening in know who's speaking. The Teams call doesn't always, can't always support all of your photos, and even here in the Boards and Commissions' Room, we can't see everybody's photos. So for those listening in, and even for your fellow Commissioners, please state your name before making your presentation and your comment. So we are going to start with the growth strategy. Olivia, can you advance to that slide? And just to reiterate, these are initial thoughts of the Planning Commissioners that are sharing those initial thoughts with each other, as well as with members of the public calling in. So take it away, whoever is next.
It's like you're up. Housing and Transportation Group.
Okay. My name is Matt Hutchins. It's daunting to cover the whole growth strategy in five minutes, so we'll be going pretty fast here. So from a housing-centric perspective, I just want to look at it through, kind of broken it down into three buckets. The first here is that the growth areas have essentially just been rebranded. What were urban hubs and villages are now regional centers and urban centers, and the effect of zoning within them is negligible, with the exception of converting residential small-lot zoning into low-rise zoning, which is basically the same density, just different development guidelines. This doesn't, you know, these zones may change in the future, but currently, that's kind of propagating the status quo here. This is also where nearly all of our affordable housing will continue to be produced. Next slide. The expansions of these centers are fairly limited. They happen in six different centers, and then there's one new center around the light rail station at 130th. There's no center around the light rail station at 145th. And the implementation of the zoning within these expanded areas is to be determined, but there is a slight increase in overall capacity, about a little under 10,000 units. These housing numbers I'm using are from the Appendix B. There is a breakdown by zone, by type, by alternative, which I highly recommend. Okay, next slide. The plan adds neighborhood centers. These are small nodes. There are 24 in this plan. There were 40 in the earlier scoping, or the earlier phase. These are kind of like, I think, the DNA of the 15-minute city. These are established, kind of currently non-conforming commercial centers with mixed use, and they happen mostly in high-opportunity areas, less so in the southeast zone. And, you know, they are four to six stories relative to three stories of the surrounding neighborhoods. This is the biggest new component of housing. About nearly 20,000 units happen here. Next slide. Finally, there is everywhere else in the city, which is now, has gone from neighborhood residential to urban neighborhood. I know there's going to be a lot of conflict with the changing nomenclature, but the growth continues to be in the formerly urban centers. And we're only asking about 24,000 additional homes in what has been slated for the sort of missing-middle new housing types, townhouses, triplexes. So it's not much more than we currently permit with just ADUs and single-family homes. Let's see, next slide. If you break these numbers down, again, from that same appendix, you can see, you know, just stacked up, the light blue columns are no action alternative, alternative one, and then the darker blue columns are what is provided in alternative five over alternative one. So alternative five is the one that produces the most housing, the most affordable housing, the lowest vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gases. That's the option that I picked to use as my benchmark, even though there is no preferred alternative yet within this. So this information is from alternative five, but there are four other alternatives that could be part of the final decision. And I think that's it. I think, Michaela, you want to take the next one?
All right. Michaela Dafford. So this lapped me thinking when I was reading the growth strategy. This heavily weighted on the centers sort of just continues to uphold and perpetuate the same patterns of exclusion that we've seen for decades, if not centuries over a century in Seattle. And as I was trying to go through and think from an equity lens about some of the issues, I'm questioning some of these strategies in terms of are they actually effectively addressing anti-displacement? Are they truly going to provoke more affordable homeownership opportunities in parts of the city? Why isn't the city doing more to diversify housing types in our neighborhood residential zones? I see I've already forgotten the rebranded new name. Are we truly increasing housing choices in neighborhoods with high access to opportunity for all households with this strategy? And in what ways? While the plan does acknowledge and say that the plan is approaching its land use patterns in a way that will repair harms from past racially exclusive and discriminatory housing and land use practices, I question whether or not this response is actually meaningfully addressing that, because it truly is sort of upholding the same patterns of exclusion that we've seen. Next slide. Okay, this is a new bar chart to me. It's one that we talked about this morning, so I'm going to take this in in real time with you all. One of the things that Seattle's doing is it received a growth target allocation through the regional planning process that we use here in the state in King County. And that is an 80,000-unit-- And they that is an 80,000 unit growth target. What the city has done is they've taken their their larger growth target, which was starting, which was from 2019 to 2044, and they deducted out production that has happened to date. That's how they got to this 80,000 unit number. And if you read throughout the plan, the plan acknowledges in several places that the city has grown jobs have grown far more than its housing supply, therefore increasing the cost of housing. And this plan, I fear, is using a number that is just far too low to really accommodate the amount of growth that is likely to come our way. And Burke, they're now the city of Seattle hired a consultant in 2021 to do their own housing needs analysis. And that consultant used two scenarios. One was 80,000 units. The other was about 120,000 units. And even in that analysis, their own consultant said the higher range of the analysis was probably insufficient to address the city's goals of inclusion and 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 having a more equitable city in the future. So I think this is something that I want to sort of talk through and work through with the group more is kind of what kind of comment would we like to make on how much growth the city should actually be planning for with this plan and is 80,000 sufficient? I hope I made sense. I think that's what the slide was telling us. Matt, can you do the next slide? Because I think I may have got myself confused. Did I just talk about this slide?
Sort of, yeah, I'll just I'll just quickly say. I just took our eight year average of new housing, new housing units that we produced. And it's roughly 80 or it's almost 8,700. So under any of these modeled conditions, we're producing far more housing today than in any of these scenarios. And so the question is, shouldn't we be perhaps planning for both the impacts and the opportunities of a higher growth rate rather than hewing closer to just what the bare minimum that our 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 goals have been set for us?
Thank you. And I think that takes us to Deanna.
Is Lauren? Is has Lauren been able to join? Squires?
I don't think so. Lauren is not on the call.
Okay. She's not. I'll just make this point very quick. We're actually going to spend some time on this particular point in our transportation element discussions. So I'll just really quickly mention that something that was important is to make sure that we were tying in the growth strategy with the 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 transportation element. And what is what became important is we would like to see the comprehensive plan prioritize clearly the hierarchy of the network connections based on place type. So basically, this requires understanding and making it clear in the plan that within the the neighborhoods, we require local connected network networks for short trips done in sustainable mode, so walking, biking. And then when we're thinking about connecting the the larger centers and the urban villages and neighborhoods, we need to prioritize connections that are done by transit. And of course, all of this being taken into consideration in 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 making sure that we have adequate movement of goods and services between the mix, the urban villages and the neighborhoods and regionally significant transportation facilities, so wifi, for example. So understanding and making it clearer, the connection between where growth is happening and what kinds of connections the network should prioritize is something that we're interested in highlighting a little bit more clearly defined in the plan. And this should, you know, then help define for other instruments and plans and policies to operationalize with policy guidance, how to allocate street space based on lands and use characteristics and street mobility function. So I'll stop there, but we'll go a little bit more into this later in the transportation element discussion.
And I'll just interject, that was Deanna Quintanar speaking.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, Deanna Quintanar.
No problem. Please remember to introduce yourself for the benefit of members of the public. Thank you. And is one of you going to sum up so far? Do you think we've covered it?
I think we've covered it in the interest of time.
All right, looks like the land use group is up next.
Okay, I'm Rick Muller, representing the land use group here with with Nick and others. And we don't have quite as many items to cover as housing and transportation, but one of them, item one, a takeaway is that we are not planning, it's already been discussed that we're not providing for enough additional housing to meet future demand. In addition, we are not planning for the existing unmet housing needs with our current growth target. And this should be included as well. We find that the criteria for neighborhood centers is not clearly articulated. And that more locations should be designated as such, as was mentioned by Matt. There was originally 40 proposed in an earlier scoping document. It's been reduced to 24. It's unclear why, and the criteria should be more articulated as to why that is. We believe that the response to displacement should be more robust. For example, as the plan addressed the social and cultural aspects of displacement. We did not see policy support for alternative forms of land ownership and other models of the housing affordability, such as limited equity cooperatives. The plan does not appear to address commercial displacement in addition to residential displacement. The plan in our view does not adequately recognize, we recognize, we understand that this is a dynamic and evolving condition. But it does not adequately recognize the changed relationship between job centers and neighborhoods and the opportunity that this presents for future growth. And finally, we would like to see greater clarity on the designation of regional centers. We're curious, for example, as as to why West Seattle with with future access to light rail was excluded excluded. And however, we do appreciate the proposal to expand the urban centers in Finney Ridge, Queen Anne, and Admiral. And I'm going to pass it off to Nick to see if he has anything to add.
Thanks, Rick. So Nick Whipple here. That was a good summary, and we had a lot of similar comments and discussions as the other group, it sounds like. To point out the comment around neighborhood centers, it was exciting for us to think about that, as Matt kind of pointed out, it's sort of the DNA of a 15 minute city. So we feel like, at least with the pandemic and seeing the shifts in how we work, it really elevated kind of the value of having places near you. And so we were pretty excited to see this concept, but a little disappointed, I guess, that it didn't follow maybe the frequent transit network or didn't have kind of a broader approach on on neighborhood centers. So looking for more designations for neighborhood centers is important for us. And then just a clarification on the growth targets, because we had noted at least the 105,000 units would bring us closer to a one and a half to one ratio for jobs to housing, which is getting closer to balance in terms of what we're projecting for growth. But again, it's still not meeting or planning for that existing unmet housing need. So we still see a lot of challenges with the the targets that we're following here. Yeah, I don't think I have much else to add. Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Nick.
Round to the next group? Yes, I'm not sure there's a slide. Do you mind advancing and seeing? Okay, back one, please. Can we? Okay, great. I'd like to invite Rose, J D, and or Caleb to share that group's thoughts on growth strategy, starting with Rose. If you haven't.
Yeah, so for folks who need to refresh, I'm Rose, pronouns A them, and my views are my own and not those of my employer. So kind of adding on to what some of the other groups have said. And one of the things I appreciated personally was that there were references to trying to create a city that promotes joy. And I think the question is, well, how do we make that realistic and achievable? And can we help provide comments to make this more visionary? I also was curious if any other commissioners had seen references to affordable, multi generational housing anywhere in the plan, because my cursory review, I haven't gotten a chance to get through all of it, but I haven't seen it anywhere. And it feels like that's missing, so I wanted to point that out. And then there are some references that I've seen to needing regional and intra-city department planning. But I felt that they could be stronger. And so I'd like us as a commission to consider how much to also emphasize the regional context for the growth strategy. Would any other commissioners in my group like to add on?
Yeah, I think that we talked about.
Jamie, can you please? Sorry, please state your name.
This is Jamie. She her pronouns, my views are also my own and not my employer. I think another thing we discussed in our group, because we reviewed the climate and parks and open space section was to really, and the commission has talked about this before, is to really think about climate change impacts and sea level rise and where we're putting growth. And just wanted to note that South Park is being listed as an urban center. So that is something that and also the neighborhood that is disproportionately, it's going to experience sea level rise. So I think that's something worth us discussing as a commission. And then the other thing I would flag is the lack of any sort of designation, either neighborhood center or something around the 145th station area. It just seems like every other major light rail station we have invested in in density around that and maximizing that investment of a regional transit system. And it's noticeably different if you look at the shoreline side of 145th versus the Seattle side of 145th. So I think that would be something worth the commission discussing as well.
Thank you all. At this point, this is Vanessa Murdock, staff to the commission. I'd like to invite commissioners who haven't spoken yet to put their name in the chat and we can take about another 10 minutes just either reiterating what your colleagues have said or raising other issues for the commission to consider as we move along, as you all move along, your review and development of your comments over the next six weeks. So if you do have additional comments, questions, observations, please put your name in the chat. Otherwise, we will move on to the next topic of conversation, which is housing and transportation. So I'm seeing two names in the chat right now, Julio, then Michaela. So Julio, please go ahead.
I wanted to first and foremost welcome and upheld the work of the team that just spoke about the impact of of climate change and such. But I also wanted to uphold a comment that was made in writing about allocating more open space, more parks and such, but specifically to areas in Seattle that have traditionally lacked access to these parts. Of course, because they are mostly areas where low income communities that have been classified as low income people of color, BIPOC residents have lived. And they needed the most as the heat increased. This is where I think the city should focus their effort on creating new parks and open spaces as naturally occurring cooling spaces.
Thank you, Julio. Michaela Daffern.
Michaela Daffern. My views are not that of my employer. Rose, you asked if I if any of us saw a statement about multi generational housing? Is that correct?
Yes, and affordable also affordable, multi generational housing.
Okay, I'm going to drop something in the chat. It's policy H six four 6.4, which says encourage in all neighborhoods, the development of housing suitable for families with children, larger households and multi generational living and affordable to households with broad range of incomes.
Please, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michaela. This is Vanessa, staff to the commission. I'm just going to reiterate that for members of the public who might be scrolling through the plan and trying to find out what policy was just referenced, and it is policy H, that's the housing element, 6.4. Any other comments on the gross initial comments on the growth strategy before we move on to housing and transportation? Please put your name in the chat. Deanna, thank you.
I'll just mention that I was extremely grateful that this version of the comp plan was searchable for text. It made the review much simpler, so greatly appreciate that, that we were able to get a draft that allowed us to do a quick review for keywords to identify where we might have otherwise missed information being cross referenced across elements. So just kudos to that.
Thank you. I see a number of additional other commissioners also saying plus one to that. It really does make the make the plan more approachable to be able to have hyperlinks in the table of contents as well as to be searchable, as Deanna just mentioned. I'm going to suggest that we move on to housing and transportation. And again, I would just ask whoever is speaking, just remind you to please state your name. And whether and to to reiterate that your views are your own and not those of your employer, if that resonates with you. Thank you. This was Vanessa.
Hi, this is Matt Hutchins again. You guys, okay if I go over this? Let's see. Okay, so just high level. You know, reviewing the the goals, just so that we have a little additional context, providing stability and access and and expand access to opportunity, close, you know, racial and class disparity or disparities. That all people have housing that's, you know, that it's fair and equitable access, that we are dealing with displacement, that we're expanding housing to to meet all economic and demographic groups, including those that are not met by the market. That's a really important point. Next, next slide there. I think I think we all would like to see housing choice in all neighborhoods for all households and incomes. That is a steep climb, which we'll see in the housing element review here. And I think one thing that is here in high level goal, but I would like to see something more editorializing here. Like to see more in the plan is that homelessness is rare and brief. And that people experiencing homelessness can secure housing in supportive services. And I think that there there are a lot of issues that we're going to delve into more over the over the, you know, coming in two months. But I wanted to hit hit sort of the the housing choice in all neighborhoods aspect. And just kind of evaluate especially the urban neighborhood section, the kind of missing middle section. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so this is data from the same same table as earlier. It's just visualized slightly differently. Here, the dark blue is everything that's in a now called a center. The the slightly lighter blue are those neighborhood centers. You can see overall that our expectation is that versus the status quo, we're going to continue to put about 80% of our new housing into the centers. And for the rest of the city, then there's about, you know, it's we're expecting about, you know, roughly 20%, so slightly more than than in the past. However, it's it's still very similar to the status quo. One of the big elements that we that I would have expected to see is that missing middle housing, i.e. those six plexes, you know, four plexes. plexes, townhouses that were, that are mandated through HV11110, that they would have a bigger impact on our projected housing supply. But you can see that it hasn't mattered that much. We've got, if you, if you bundle the 7.4 and the 13%, we're, you know, we're basically 20% versus 16.5%. We've, we've grown the pie a little bit, but not as much as I would have, I would have expected. So why is that the case? So if we go to the, go to the next slide. So on the left is a diagram of what's allowed in neighborhood residential today. It's effectively a floor area ratio of 0.9. So we can build, you know, on a, on a 5,000 square foot site, multiply that by 0.9, we could build 4,500 square feet. And currently today, that's divided into a main house and two ADUs. Under the, under the One Seattle Plan, that hasn't changed. We've, we're essentially still at a 0.9, same height. We've changed the setbacks a little bit. But we've just kind of cut the pie from, you know, into four slices into three. For reference, the state model code recommends a FAR for four units at 1.2. So that on the right side, you're seeing, you know, basically a larger footprint of buildable, buildable square footage for more units. And it uses kind of a baseline of about a 1,400 square foot unit. So next, next slide. So you can see that what we're expecting in, in most of urban neighborhoods is that, that they're the exact same size building as what we can produce today, only it's potentially cut into, into four units rather than three. And I think that part of why the projections that, that, that new housing doesn't grow much more in these areas is because these four units are, it's a little, it's not much more feasible than three units. So the development equation has not, you know, we have not unlocked a lot of lots for new development, just by going from three units to four units. In fact, I think in some cases, three units is going to be more economically viable than four units, hence why the, the overall number is down. Now, that isn't to say that there isn't a great market for these. This is, you know, our starter homes. These are very, very popular, in part because there isn't, there, there isn't much supply for them, and just a ton of demand. But I think that it's really important to, to characterize that this is, with this low FAR and with these low densities, there's, there's not a lot of opportunity for housing choice. We are really kind of optimizing the development market for, for townhouses primarily. In the DEIS, they actually look at a project, projects of this size, whether they currently exist on the market, and yes, they do. But they cost around $754,000 on average, which is 154% of the area median income. So as I see it, you know, the opportunities for housing choice or affordable housing and even multi-generational housing in these urban neighborhoods is going to be limited by the strategy as it stands. A couple more points. So I've broken out two little chunks of the pie, the 7.4%. This is, in the appendix, is a special little category called urban residential slash corridors. We don't have any sort of design standards for what, what and where these corridors are going to be, except along, they're going to be somehow along arterials. But we don't know, I mean, we don't, yeah, we don't know what they, what, how they've, how they've gotten to this number. We can't really evaluate the, the, you know, what the zoning looks like, what the urban design looks like, what the health impacts are. The other, the other chunk of this, that 16.4%, those are the neighborhood centers. And you can see, that's a big chunk of our new housing. And also, we don't really have a really good idea of what the zoning is going to be like in there. So it's really hard to evaluate about a quarter of, of what we can expect for new zoning. Go to the next slide. I want to highlight this for everyone. This is from the draft EIS, page 165, 1-65, that you can see the number of condominiums, the number of non-stacked houses is pretty low. It's less than 10,000. And so 10,000 of 120,000, that's what we're thinking are the potential ownership opportunities for new homes under this, under the most aggressive of these alternatives. And I think that that's just something we have to know, realize, and probably work on if the rhetoric continues, that, that we really want to support ownership or property ownership through this plan, that right now our housing types are where we can provide housing types that, that lend themselves towards homeownership. We're not producing enough of them. And then I think finally, I wanted to make one more point here with the, the next slide here. One of the goals here is to, you know, seek to reduce the potential health impact of air pollution on residential populations. And we have, I don't see where we've kind of like taken this to heart, if we're going to plan a lot of housing along corridors, if we are continuing the sort of growth patterns so that we know within the Seattle, you know, when Seattle did the racial equity toolkit on urban villages, we know that the, that there are inordinate hazards and impacts on those populations. And I don't see that we're moving far enough away to mitigate those harms. And then we have a final sort of takeaways. Let's see. Does someone else want to do this? Or, I mean, Michaela, do you want to do this? Or I've been talking a lot.
I can take it away. Sure.
All right, thanks.
Give you a break. I'm Michaela Daphern. I also read the housing element and analyzed it alongside Matt. You know, if you look at the plan and the policy language all by itself, in some respects, you're like, okay, this policy language looks good. That sounds like a great idea. You sound like great goals. But we're not sure that the ideas and the policies are supported by the growth strategy. Specifically, one good example of that is that the city's done a great job of acknowledging at a high level, summarizing in their element, past harms and, past harms and racial discrimination. And yet, we're not sure if the plan does follow through to identify adequate strategies to repair those harms. I'll say that there's a forthcoming analysis in, and housing needs analysis and appendix that will hopefully provide a more thorough kind of documentation of past harms. And I look forward to being able to read that and connect the city's policies to the harms, to the, the past history identified, just sort of see how, how, if I can see a through line between the analysis and policies. We appreciate the attention to displacement, but you know, some of the approaches leave us questioning whether or not they are the right way to deal with displacement in the city. And so we think it's really important to hear from communities who are experiencing displacement on whether these policies are the right fit. I will be listening for that when I go to my open house, and I hope to hear more input from, from OPCD when they report back to us on how their engagement went and what they heard. And I, I think, I believe that we need to see more capacity and growth overall if we actually want to change housing trends, and we really want to reverse this trend of unaffordability in our city. And as I mentioned earlier, I haven't really, don't feel like I've completed my review, because I'm really waiting for their housing needs analysis to be released so I can do a further documentation. There's going to be great stuff in there, hopefully, where the city idea identifies barriers to housing affordability in Seattle. And their policies are supposed to, I begin to identify ways to address those gaps and, and barriers. And I'm just very much looking forward to seeing all the documentation. And thank you. With that, I think I'm either passing it over to Lauren, who's joined us. Welcome, Lauren, or Deanna.
Yeah, so let's take a minute and let Lauren introduce herself. And Andy, if he would introduce himself before we move on.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Squires, she/her. I'm a multimodal transportation planner, and I live by the Mount Baker Light Rail Station. Andy?
I think Andy's in an unfamiliar space, so it may not work out. That's fine. If you, if you work it out, Andy, let me know, and we'll, we'll do it later. And Lauren, you're on anyway, I believe. You or, you or Deanna, who's going first on transportation?
I think I'm going first.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, good afternoon. My name is Deanna Quintanar, and views are my own and not of those of my employer. So we wanted to start just with, similar to the housing element, provide a very quick overview in glance of the nine goals that are included in the transportation element. These nine goals are, by and large, is, you know, parallel to what we saw in the, and is, are echoed in the Seattle Transportation Plan. So there's that consistency that we were looking for. And generally, I'll go over like these, the first goal is one that's, is intended to focus on supporting the growth strategy and, and coordination with land use goals. The second and third goal are very much around creating choice. So how to create safe, comfortable people movement, and in, and creating inviting spaces within the right of way, and creating equitable access to multiple options of transportation. The fourth goal is one that centers around creating healthy communities, environmental quality, the future of, of, you know, basically the energy intensity of the transportation system. Next slide, please. Goal five is really the one that's focused on freight, let's just say, improbability and access for goods and services to promote economic activity. Sorry, is that the one about freight? Yes. And goal six is transportation system to be safe. This is the safety goal, so to speak, particularly focused on vulnerable users. This is one that we felt needed to be elevated in this list, but it's currently as goals, listed as goal six. Goal seven is focused on making sure that there's regional coordination to connect the city and the surrounding region. Goal eight is about maintenance, and, you know, how to maintain our, our transportation system assets. And the last goal is around ensuring there's sufficient funding for a transportation system to operate, maintain, and improve the system. So generally, these goals, frame, if you can go to the next slide, please. What, what we were excited to see is first and foremost, that personal vehicles are no longer front and center or the main focus of the element. So we celebrate that. And also, this plan presents a robust network of active transportation and transit. So basically, if this network gets fully built out, you know, we anticipate having strong supply of choices to address the growth. The challenge, of course, is hoping we can actually implement it. We, however, would, would have liked to see that stronger language could be incorporated to encourage the reduction in single occupancy vehicles. That language is pretty strongly stated in the discussion parts, but in the goals piece, I think there's an opportunity to stay in tight, you know, travel demand, demand management strategies stronger into the goal language. And, you know, there's, there's some correspondences with like land use goals. For example, land use goal five focuses strongly, and I celebrate that, on on-street parking. But again, the, the other toolkits of the toolbox for travel demand management were not fully incorporated. I think an important thing that we've mentioned in the past is our appetite to see these plans overlaid with race and social equity indices, just to understand which communities are benefiting the most from these investments. And although the, the language that addresses very explicitly racial and social inequity, we would really like to see that tie, that connection be more clearly established in, in the plan through the maps and the plans. Also, generally, I think, similar to the housing element, it, the, the plan was not released with the appendices that would have some of the transportation data. It appears that those will be released with the final report. But we believe it would be really helpful to have access to that information to support and understand how data-driven decisions can inform the policy that we're recommending to, to strengthen in the plan. Some opportunities real quick, as we mentioned, is I think strengthening the language to provide clear guidance around how to allocate the right of way and the decision-making hierarchy when we have important trade-offs or competing pressures on, on our roadways and, and, and transportation plants. We think that there's an opportunity in which the plan could be strengthened to establish clear visionary measurable targets as a compass for decision-making, for evaluation and accountability. We'll touch that here in a moment. We really want to see safety elevated, as I mentioned, given that 80% of, 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 you know, serious and fatal injuries happen in arterials. So we really want to see language that is strong, strongly and specific about improving safety of arterials. And we see an opportunity also for the plan to be clearer in the role of streets for mitigating impacts for more frequent and intense storm water events, as was mentioned a little bit around the climate goals, and the additional benefits of green infrastructure on pollution reduction and traffic calming. So I'll turn it over to Lauren now.
Thanks, Deanna. This is kind of touching on that first, and this is Lauren, my views are my own. This is touching on that first opportunity from the last slide, where I think our observation as a team was that the, the right goals are in the transportation element, but really how those get worked out is unclear to us. So this is really about prioritizing our street space along those connections based on the types of places they support. And what we're talking about is kind of the 15-minute city concept, where people can take short trips, walking, rolling, biking, or by bus, within their neighborhoods, that we're allocating right-of-way along our neighborhood commercial main streets for people to access transit easily, and creating a really nice connected network of walking and rolling facilities within our neighborhoods for those short trips. But then, when we think about those kind of longer trips, the three-to-five mile trips in our city, we are building a regional transit network, and that is fast and frequent and reliable. And so we really want to prioritize the connections between our urban villages and centers with transit. And then those connections between regionally significant facilities like I-5, connecting to the manufacturing industrial centers to make sure that those arteries for goods and service movement are safe and reliable, especially for trucks. And so when we think about the policy guidance that would operationalize that, that is, where do you give that precious street space to who and to what modes? And so to understand more of a hierarchy and making hard decisions around the safety, comfort of all modes, based on the types of activity we want to see, sustainable travel between neighborhoods, short, sustainable trips on foot and by bike in neighborhoods, that there's going to need to be some sort of policy guidance of how we make those difficult trade-offs. And our group is interested to see kind of how that policy guidance can connect our growth strategy and land use vision, along with the, the really tight-knit transportation networks that we see. But, you know, we all, we all move around Seattle, and we know that there are those corridors where everything converges. And so a little bit more guidance for how, how that would work and how those trade-offs, we can make those trade-offs. We see that as an opportunity for the plan. And along with that, it's not just the projects, it's not just the infrastructure, it's the programs and the policies that can be layered on, how we manage parking, how we incentivize and make transit most accessible and potentially free for youth now and others, maybe. And just thinking about those transportation demand management layers that, that are really going to encourage the behavior change that we're supporting with our infrastructure. Deanna, do you want to talk about targets next?
Sure. And just to, to close this off, I think one of the key recommendations we're anticipating to include is recommend including aspirational goals with measurable targets, as I mentioned. And the real intent behind it is to frame the policy goals with clear performance targets on the plan. So like high-level indicators that can serve as a compass for decision-making, part of an evaluation framework, to make sure we can track the progress of how we're doing, you know, through, through periodic evaluations of our policies, and to support accountability of our decisions. And so some examples here, we weren't exhaustive in showing all of them, just but for the benefit, some of the most importance that we would like to see reflected in clear, specific language is targets around vehicle miles travel, which- reflected in clear, specific language is targets around vehicle miles traveled, which this goal that we see here, which is to reduce total vehicle miles traveled on city streets by at least 37% by 2044. It supports very clearly and directly four of the goals stated in the transportation element, and also is now stated in the Seattle Transportation Plan Table 2 for vehicular performance measures. So things that are already in the plan level, we want to see elevated and be specific and direct in the plan. Another one is mode share, for example, which is how to make sure that it is clear that we want to increase trips by active and shared zero emission modes to represent 70% of all travel and relegate single occupancy vehicles to just 30%, up to 30% of trips and more. And this, you know, complies with, you know, international best practices for cities, peer cities to Seattle. In terms of street space for people, we anticipate recommending that, a statement that really establishes doubling the person throughput on Seattle's busiest streets by 2044 by implemented connected multimodal networks. And, you know, we have many other potential targets around climate action, safety, and equity, all which can and should align with the Seattle Transportation Plan, but that we would like to see clearly stated and additionally potentially have the opportunity for interim goals, but like 2034 goals that could have a racial equity lens applied to them to understand what should be achieved first, to make sure that we're on a path to implementing a policy that it has racially equitable outcomes. And that's all we have for the transportation element.
So that's great. I also reviewed the transportation element. And I just want to underscore the points that Deanna and Lauren made. First of all, the comp plan should be the place that is the source of guidance. We have a really robust transportation, 20-year transportation plan that was just adopted. It unfortunately doesn't, it outlines all the competing interests that we have on particular in our arterioles, but it doesn't really tell you how you're supposed to prioritize them, when and where. And I think the point we wanted to really underscore was, you go by what kind of place you're looking at. Are you looking at an urban center? Are you looking at the places between those centers? And you make sure that you're prioritizing the right modes in each of those places. The comp plan ought to be the source of that. And then Deanna's really important point that she made was, we have to hold ourselves accountable for progress along the way. And we have to put some benchmarks out there that we can look to so that we know we're headed the way we want to head. So now I think we want to have a few minutes of discussion. I think we have until 4:25 or so to have conversation amongst ourselves about housing and transportation and what you've heard to this point. And if you put your name in the chat, that'd be great. If somebody's got a burning thing while other folks are putting their names in the chat, you can feel free to come in right now.
This is Vanessa, staff to the commission. Thanks, David. That was just David Goldberg speaking, co-chair and chairing this meeting. Thanks.
Yeah. And thank you. I really appreciate my colleagues for taking the lead on that presentation. They did a nice job. Michaela, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I think maybe it was implied, but the benchmarks that we just talked about, the setting goals and targets for success and having a compass modeled here for the transportation chapter, but is potentially also something that we could consider recommending for other chapters as well, elements, sorry.
And Andy, why don't you take this opportunity to introduce yourself since you, as you said, found the controls?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'm Andy Danenberg on the commission, on the faculty, University of Washington. I'm a physician with faculty appointments in both public health and in urban planning. And I work at that intersection of built environment and public health. So when time comes for my comments, I'm looking at the plan from the public health point of view.
Are there any other thoughts, comments, observations to this point? Anyone would like to share? Rose?
Hi. I figured I'd pop on, since we have time, and say that the Climate and Environment Group, we also discussed briefly how we were disappointed that the plan did not include aspirational goals with measurable targets. So I just wanted to second and uplift that, that we also felt like that was something we'd like to see in other elements, or that I, I'm going to speak for myself, I would like to see. And then also, kind of a preview for our section two, because climate and sustainability was named in the overall comp plan introduction as a key move, one of my questions for the group, and that maybe you could comment for your review specifically, did you feel like the sections you reviewed had strong tie-ins to climate and sustainability as a key move? Or are there other areas where you thought there were some deficits? And also, since this is just on the fly, feel free to think about. We'll have more opportunities to discuss, I'm sure.
Anyone wants to? I'd say, I see, I saw good language, you know, general language. But again, I think, you know, I mean, I will commend whoever integrated the tone and voice of the entire comp plan, had a good tech editor to really unify the tone and the voice. At the same time, it feels like it would really benefit, right? Like, there's this huge opportunity to just strengthen these very specific goals. So I would say, yes, there's language there that I saw that I celebrate. But I think without looking at the data and the targets being explicit, it's, they might come short in making it a reality.
Deanna, while you have the mic, you wanted to make a comment on the tie to jobs?
Yes, I just, this is Deanna Quintanar, again, views are my own. I just wanted to tie it back to a comment that Rose, through the, I think, the land use section, you were mentioning. We did discuss and didn't finalize, since this is just our initial take on this, but we also identified the importance of wanting to understand jobs and the tie of commuting patterns, the assumptions that are being used with regards to our, how our transportation system is going to be affected or informed by where the concentration of jobs we're seeing reflected in the plan. And so something that will be interesting to cross-pollinate across elements and like the discussion is, yeah, to understand the tie-in between jobs and transportation and whether there might be enough information or nuance in it to understand if there might be opportunities to enhance the plan in that regard, especially with post-COVID environment.
Michaela?
Deanna kind of made the point I was going to make, so I defer to, withdraw my comment.
It was a shared comment.
Matt?
Yeah. One thing I did see is that they did have some breakdown in the DEIS about the relative, about the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled, you know, key indicators for sort of sustainability and climate. And there was a big spread. The alternative five outperformed the other alternatives significantly. I think it was like, you know, 20, 25% over, like less, I think it was 25 and 22% between less greenhouse gas per capita and less VMT per capita from a no-action alternative. And it just goes to show that maybe they should lean in more into the kinds of dense housing types that alternative five envisioned, if we want to get additional sort of benefits.
We probably have time for another observation or two, if anybody has something else. Jamie?
I had a question for our land use folks and folks who reviewed the growth strategy with that lens, if you all kind of looked at the maps and had any reflections on, are we still leaving behind any car-dependent neighborhoods? And are we doing enough to address that? Particularly, like, our group is looking at it from a climate perspective too of like, so I'm curious if that came up in your discussion, or if you saw anything addressing that adequately?
My own observation is that we have left some good chunks of the city that are still predominantly car-dependent and missing an opportunity to maybe move away from that. And another, another observation is that I think we could have stronger integration of policies around greening our streets, using green infrastructure, in particular for managing wastewater, stormwater, I mean. But also greening our streets overall, reducing the heat island effect. And whenever you put more vegetation on a, on a street and convert concrete to something that's greener, you're doing something both to mitigate against the impacts of climate change and to slow traffic and to make it safer and more inviting. So you get multiple benefits for an urbanizing area. And so I think our next presentation is going to be on land use. And I'm not sure who's taking the lead there. Vanessa, do you know?
I think I will start.
Okay.
This is Rick Moller. And I will then actually ask Zio and Monica if they would like to add some thoughts, since I apologize, we skipped you last time. So the elements, I have to say, I'm missing a contact lens, so I actually am having trouble reading the screen. So I'm going to read from my piece of paper here. The land use element sections include overarching goals and policies, urban design, uses, general development standards, off-street parking, public facilities and small institutions, telecommunication facilities, downtown zones, Seattle mixed zones. And next slide. Multifamily zones, commercial zones, neighborhood residential zones, industrial zones, location-specific regulations, major institutions, historic preservation and cultural resources, environmentally critical areas. We did not address all of these in our comments. But our initial takeaways, and these reflect a lot of the comments that we have seen to date, we would like to see, well, we also applaud and embrace the tone of the plan itself in terms of its goals and aspirations. But we would like to see a greater connection and a better articulation of how the policies achieve these desired outcomes and the overall vision. An example of that is that the draft plan is proposing the minimum number of housing units that are required by state legislation HB 1110. And we believe that the city should push beyond this and that Seattle, as the most transit-rich jurisdiction in the state, should lead in this effort. And so, for example, one issue is allowing a greater number of units in proximity to frequent transit. Matt showed his diagrams that illustrated the really modest increase from three units that are allowed in what are now the urban neighborhood zones to only four units. Whereas if we used our frequent transit map, which the city already has, sorry, I'm trying to find that note here. The city already has this in place, and it actually covers a pretty substantial part of the city. We would allow six units in much more of the city than is currently being proposed. So we would also like to see more evidence of how community input has been incorporated into the plan and into the elements of the plan. Our sense is that there was a much stronger sense of urgency and a much stronger desire to address the inequities of past plans in this plan than we are seeing in the policies being proposed in the plan itself. An example of that is this plan, as previous plans have discussed in the land use element, the need to balance the impacts of growth on existing residents with the need for more housing for future residents. And we don't see the language really capturing the severity of the housing crisis that we're facing and the need for urgency and swift action. We would like to see more notions in the plan of what constitutes family housing, and that it could be more than just ground-related housing in urban neighborhoods, formerly neighborhood residential, formerly single-family. And I think as Matt's diagrams illustrated, the units that will result from the current proposal will be quite small and will not be adequate as family-sized housing. We mentioned this before, but we'll mention it again, the changing nature of work. And we feel that the plan places an overemphasis on centralized employment in downtown and the regional centers, and as such, is missing an opportunity for re-envisioning greater sections of the city. We would like to see the plan more directly address affordability and access to neighborhoods. This has been discussed already by the housing group. Another comment that has already been made, and we will reinforce it, is that it is no longer enough to name the harm that has been done by past policies. We must take a much, much more divisive action and specific action to address these past harms than we see outlined in the plan. Again, this is related to a lot of the comments made by the housing group, but allowing middle housing within, throughout the city is not the same as encouraging it. And we believe that stronger policy language is needed and commitments to this type of housing in what are now called urban neighborhoods. And part of that, again, would be not defaulting to the minimum number of units that's required by HB 1110. I should preface this next statement by saying, we like corner stores. We're not opposed to corner stores. We do feel that the nomenclature of corner store might be a bit of a misnomer. It maybe should be called corner cafes or something to that effect. But it isn't entirely clear to us what problem this is intended to solve. And it's also really important to note that allowing corner stores will not make them so. Population density must be adequately increased to make them financially viable. And so again, this ties into increasing the allowable number of units and the size of the units in more neighborhoods throughout the city. We did talk a bit about parking and parking policy, and we'll talk more about that. And had a discussion about increasing the market's role in determining and really resolving the relationship between the advantages and the costs of parking. We had a discussion about potentially even waiving minimum off-street parking requirements, which some cities have done, but there is also expressed concern about the impact that this might have on more auto-dependent areas in the city, which are often communities of color. So that is, will be a subject of future conversations with the commission. And now I will pass it off to either Zio or Monica. And now I will pass it off to either Zeo or Monica. Either of you would like to add to what, what I've just outlined?
Hi, this is Monica Sharma. Yep, I just wanted to add that I think there's a connection between, it's not on this slide, but what we observed on the last slide, just about the lacking in evidence of community engagement. And Michaela's point about displacement strategies being informed by community, anti-displacement strategies being informed by community. I think it's a theme that kind of spreads across these elements. And that just, that, that's, that, um, yeah, what Michaela said earlier resonated with me because of the discussion that we had had, and I just wanted to kind of emphasize that.
This is Vanessa. Sorry, I was just going to say Zeo had to step away, so she is not here. Go ahead, Monica. Sorry to cut you off.
That was actually exactly what I was going to say was I'm not sure if Zeo is still here.
Rick, great. This is Nick Whipple. Rick had a nice summary, Monica, good comments added as well. The only other maybe piece that I would just highlight in the land use element, there was the section on general development standards, which Rick did talk about a bit. But one of the pieces in there that we were looking at is language around transitions. So LU 4.5 as an example, where we see, when we look at kind of the historical context of transition, some of the harm that it creates, typically again, being implemented, well, I guess I shouldn't oversimplify it. There are a lot of reasons why transitionary requirements are implemented. But one of those key reasons is typically around preserving neighborhood character or protecting the interests of existing property owners and preserving aesthetics. So one of the challenges that we were thinking through is just having a clearer understanding of the specific intent and then how those will play out or what kind of guidance is that providing for regulations and, and just kind of cautioning some of the, the use of transitions if we're trying to meet the challenge of our, our current housing crisis. So I just wanted to highlight that point.
Thank you, Lynn.
I think it's, sorry David, I think it's back to you.
Okay, so that, so that does it for the land use presentation part, right? And are we doing the, some conversation about it?
Yes, please.
We're in conversation.
Conversation. Observations, questions, additions? Michaela?
I just wanted to acknowledge, your presentation was clear. I really love how you just zoomed in on the takeaways. And I am surprised thus far about how similar and aligned your feedback is with some of my thoughts about the plan. So, great job, you guys. And I feel like this is serving as a, a good start for, for what we could put into a comment letter.
Thanks, Michaela. You too.
We just had so much to say and like not enough time to organize our thoughts and concerns that we hadn't finished our review fully, so. But yeah, great job.
See other, other observations on the land use element? If not, we will move on. Let's see, who's up next, Vanessa?
That would be Rose.
Yes, hello. So I was with the Climate and Environment Group. Our group was Jamie, myself, Caleb, Andy and Julia, although I think Julia was pretty busy during the initial two-week period. And so I was tasked with reviewing the carbon pollution reduction or the, the carbon pollution reductions chapter of the Climate and Environment section. And, and so I'll also apologize, I've had some personal circumstance, which means that my review was cut super short and did not have a lot of time to work with Vanessa and staff on preparing slides. So I'll ask that you have a copy of the plan up for cross-referencing when I refer to goals and try to do better in the future about carving out time. But sometimes personal circumstances do not allow. And then similarly, so for my section, I'll be starting and then Jamie may be chiming in here and there with additional observations. So we'll, we'll do the best we can. So without further ado, so Climate and Environment, I think as I mentioned, as a comment on one of the other presentations that because the climate and sustainability, because climate and sustainability was named as a key move in the intro, there's language at the very start of the Climate and Environment section of the element stating that climate policy elements are in every element, or at least they're supposed to be. So as I said before, I'm curious to see if, I, I'm curious to see if other commissioners found this to be true. And then another question I had for the group is how much repetition do we think that the comp plan should have? For example, there was no mention of VMT in the Climate and Environment chapter element, but it was mentioned already in the transportation, transportation section. So are there some issues that we feel are so important that they should be repeated? Or are we okay with viewing the plan as a whole and not having that sort of repetition? So that's just one document organization, overall content, question, idea, what have you. And then also maybe before I continue, I see Jamie is posting goals in the chat. Would folks find it helpful if I read aloud the goals as we go through? Just to be back, question? Okay, I can do that. Okay. So, and then I'll also add that if I'm going too slow, please say something. I'm going to have multiple things on my screen, so an, an audio cue would be great. Okay, so the carbon pollution reduction, Part One of Climate and Environment is split into setting goals and measuring progress, transportation, development pattern, buildings and energy and solid waste. So it kind of mirrors the work that the city has already done to track emissions and how they framed it in sort of those three big groups of transportation, buildings and energy and solid waste. So starting with the setting goals and measuring progress, the first goal, CEG 1, is Seattle's core greenhouse gas emissions are reduced by 58% from 2008 levels by 2030 and attain carbon neutrality by 2050. And something that I noticed is that this section does have those sort of clear number goals, likely stemming from the fact that the city has already done work about setting goals for reducing carbon emissions. On, on that sort of section, I'm skipping my notes. Okay. So first off, one thing I noticed was that I did not see any explicit naming of racist or socially unjust practices or policies historically or currently perpetuated in this section. And in fact, the intro paints Seattle as a world leader. There is a future forward statement that the transition to zero carbon must be just, I'm paraphrasing here, and that the transition must address past harms and create a greener, healthier and more prosperous future for everyone. So there are future forward statements, but not a lot of clarity about what types of harms we're trying to address. There are some policies established like CE 1.3 and 1.4 that talk about equitable reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and but about working with key partners like frontline communities. But again, not necessarily specifically naming. So as a commission, I think we may want to see if we want to recommend more explicit language. And then kind of echoing other thoughts on accountability commitments. I think CE 1.1 in particular is about working to periodically inventory, evaluate and update targets. And I think that we should talk about what type of frequency we would recommend that the city add for that. So again, to strengthen and further that commitment so that we actually reach our goal. So, and then moving on to the transportation subsection of carbon pollution reduction, the CEG 2 goal is greenhouse gas emissions are reduced by reducing vehicle trips and transitioning to zero emission trips. And so with that goal, I thought, and I think I heard that in the transportation group too, I thought that we should consider recommending that they be more specific about what type of vehicle trip reductions are being targeted. And specifically, I think we should name personal fossil fuel and electric vehicles because this is in line with what I think we've discussed as a commission to reduce overall personal vehicle trips regardless of whether they're fossil fuel or electric vehicles. And that's both to achieve safety benefits and also fossil fuel reductions. And then, okay. We also wanted the city to commit to a specific target. So how much are we going to reduce? So not just specified mode, but also what reduction are we aiming for? And then also in that section, there are some policy statements about making zero emission trips affordable to lower-income households like CE 2.2, but no other communities are named. And then, uh, let's see. And then the transportation section also has another goal, CEG 3, which is greenhouse gas emissions are reduced by expanding and expediting the transition to electric vehicles. So for that one, that, that is kind of, I feel like what, what we've talked about in the commission of we wanted to see the city emphasize mode shift first and personal, personal vehicle electrification second, because mode shift as a commission previously we've stated is more important. So on those thoughts, I observed that there was no mention of providing equitable distribution of electrification infrastructure. And so that's something that we've previously commented on and that we may want to re-emphasize that the city revisit and reword policy to provide equitable and just distribution of electrification resources. And then similarly, Jamie reminded me that we've also commented on wanting to prioritize public transit electrification prior to commitments for things like personal vehicle charging. So also going to throw that out there. Jamie, do you want me to pause so that you can add comments or should I just keep rolling?
I, I feel like keep rolling. And then I can just add at the end.
Sounds good. Okay, so moving through, so two goals for transportation and then.
Do you mind, Matt's question is actually related to the comment I would have said, so maybe, maybe we should pause. So Matt, Matt asked, did you find anything about low emission neighborhoods? Yes, yes, we did. Called low pollution neighborhoods. There are a couple of specific language around like pursuing neighborhood scale strategies such as low-carbon, low-pollution neighborhoods. But there wasn't a whole lot of specifics on like how that was being defined, which I know is something that the commission has had questions about before, particularly as it comes to, how do you pick those and where do they go? And is it, how do we make sure that's equitable and that we're prioritizing maybe neighborhoods that have experienced disproportionate pollution burden? So I think that is something for us to follow up on and look into. Okay, now development pattern.
So development pattern. Okay, so overall, I felt that the development pattern focused on new jobs and housing. And because of that, it missed the subtlety of needing to address existing uses and the effects of historic sprawl and displacement of people from cultural community centers, grocery stores, small businesses and the like. So I'd like us as a commission to consider discussing explicit policy recommendations about providing zero emission or low emission opportunities or transportation connections between cultural community centers, small businesses and the like to those displaced communities. And then I also have a question, since I haven't finished reviewing the entire, and is if, perhaps this was already addressed in another section, if yes, I'd like to hear. And then this is, oh, right, and I was going to read the goals, so let me, let me go back to that. So for development, the goal was CEG 4, the location of new jobs and housing reduces carbon pollution and discourages fossil fuel use. So again, specific to new jobs and housing does not talk about existing uses. And so also in that sort of subsection for CE 4.4 specifically, I'm, I'm going to read this in full because what struck me is that CE 4.4 is consider limits on you or expanded bulk fossil fuel facilities when I think we need to recommend stronger language such as set limits and possibly with a recommendation on what the limit should be. I don't think consider is strong enough, even though I did read the intro section about, I think the city is concerned about legal ramifications, but this feels like something we shouldn't compromise on. I'm going to throw that out there. Okay, Jamie, your thoughts on development pattern?
We also wanted to see some stronger connections with anti-displacement strategy as we know that as folks are getting displaced further away from neighborhood centers or urban centers or things like that, or outside of the city limits entirely, that we are potentially adding to greater car traffic and, and maybe car-dependent neighborhoods or travel or commutes. And recognizing, and I will talk about this later when we get to food systems as well, that there's potentially some disproportionate impacts to cultural communities whose cultural anchors might be moving farther or, or maybe to get particular groceries or particular cultural resources. And so we'd love to see that connection between the, the transportation side and development patterns and anti-displacement.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, add to that, particularly because there was a comment about potentially pricing the use of fossil fuel vehicles and how new electric vehicles are very expensive. And so folks that might be on the later end of phasing out fossil fuel vehicles might also be the same folks that are getting displaced and are maybe not able to afford an electric vehicle.
Okay, so the next subsection was Buildings and Energy. And the goal for that one, CEG 5, is buildings are energy efficient and use 100% renewable energy that produces zero carbon pollution. So I liked seeing that there was a target. I think similar to others, I'm not sure how the policies get us there, but perhaps some of the appendices will speak to that. And I also liked seeing that CE 5.7 and 5.8 specifically spoke to lessening impacts on low-income renters and homeowners and also providing information, technical assistance and financial support to low-income homeowners and landlords. So again, I like seeing that the city intends to provide support to folks who need it. But I do think we need stronger language and I'll pass to Jamie for Jamie's thoughts.
This one was specifically, we'd love to see more support for affordable housing and public housing in particular and being able to. Uh, this one was specifically, we'd love to see, um, more support for affordable housing and public housing in particular and being able to um, uh, meet renewable energy goals and building standards. The only, the only, um, uh, statement in there that's related to that is kind of just giving affordable housing more time to meet building standards. But I think we could do better of like, maybe actually providing resources or helping to prioritize um, uh, resources to make that happen quicker. And so particularly when we think about who, um, who gets the benefit of green and affordable housing first. Um, so this is, that's something we'd love to see a connection to.
Okay, and then last part one subsection, solid waste. The solid waste goal, C E G six is Seattle's solid waste system has zero carbon pollution by 2050. And so the policies in this section are all about reducing waste, making sure that as much waste as possible is recycled and composted, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, there is some discussion in C E six point four of supporting a food system that encourages consumption of local foods and healthy foods with low carbon footprint, reduces food waste and fosters composting. And my initial observation is that I'd like to consider expanding the words here to encourage consumption of local culturally relevant foods. Uh, and, and this kind of relates to one of my earlier comments about really needing to provide options for a diversity of ethnic communities. Uh, and I'll, I'll maybe leave it there and Jamie pass it to you and then you can probably segue to your section.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, I think the last comment, um, was just about, uh, general, the general greenhouse gas emissions goals. Um, and just from a quick, thank you for the word search function. Um, the, the, the definition of embodied carbon that is used in this instance. And so if you look at the greenhouse gas emissions section, um, a lot of this is based off of kind of a direct emissions, um, pieces of the pie, so transportation, buildings, waste, right? Um, and the mention of embodied carbon in there is mostly just around buildings and building materials. Um, and I'd be curious about the consideration of embodied carbon in other projects and materials. So if we were, you know, ensuring, um, development is considering that of city projects or um, thinking, thinking about how that could be built into other things because they did say they've worked on a consumption based greenhouse gas emissions model, um, with King County. Uh, and that shows like four times the amounts of emissions. So it would just think about what are ways we could build that into, um, to goals here. So that's just food for thought. Um. The, so the other section in part two of the, of the, um, of the section is around, um, kind of the climate adaptation side. This is healthy resilient communities and environment section. The main areas it, they put out was, um, planning for resilience, community based climate resilience, extreme heat and wildfire smoke, sea level rise and flooding, more intense storms and longer dry periods, tree canopy and water and then healthy food systems. Um. There's a lot of good stuff in here. Encourage you to, uh, take, take a read through on this. Um, I think that there's just a few things that we looked at that we were like, oh, it'd actually be great to incorporate this um, in. So a few things we noted and we also, you'll notice as you read through a lot of these sections and the climate section in particular, there's actually reference to other areas of the comp plan, like see also land use, see also this. And so a question, given that we've only had our initial review, a question that we have, um, moving forward is is how well did that crosswalk into other sections? So for those of you that have, um, you know, reviewed those other sections, I'd be curious on your opinions on like, did we actually reflect the climate pieces of this into those sections well? Um, and then we kind of found that in some cases there were things that showed up in the climate section that, um, maybe were not as clear, clearly connected to, um, pieces in the other section. So that's just something for us to think about, given this is a newer section. You also noticed that in the last comp plan, there was a, um, like a community wellbeing section that is no longer um, in this version. And so, um, this is, this is some of that is kind of incorporated in here, but some of it is also in community involvement and in other places. So something for us to also look at is the pieces that were in community wellbeing in the last comp plan, like where that ended up getting distributed into this. Um. A few things for thought, uh, in this section. Um, really a need for that anti-displacement piece to be, um, to be addressed stronger connections to climate in particular. Um, we, the food section, we talked about, um, right now there's language in here in C E, uh, fourteen point two about supporting convenient access to nutritional, affordable and culturally relevant food. Um, that's convenient. So convenient access versus close access and um, wondering if we need to actually have something that is explicit about um, supporting culturally, um, relevant grocery stores and small grocery stores. Um, we also, uh, for those of you that reviewed the transportation element, um, if, asking if that element addresses small culturally relevant businesses, um, that are within, also within a 15 minute walk or bike um, or transit and just seeing if that connection happened at all. Um, so it's a question for some of you. Um, in the water subsection, uh, we were particularly wondering if there's something that could be addressed around um, bodies of water that are warming as well and the element of harmful algal blooms and other um, safety considerations that could go into place around our water bodies. Um, freshwater bodies particularly. Um, and then I brought this up earlier around the growth section. But, um, addressing this question of sea level rise, urban flooding and growth. Um, and in a question of like, is there language, explicit language anywhere around whether or not we should be encouraging growth in areas of high risk of sea level rise and flooding? Um, and what is, what is the city's role and responsibility in that for both a public health and recognizing too that those are also vibrant communities. And so are there special considerations that would have to go into place or protections? Like, I think there's a lot to unpack there. Um. And then, uh, and then lastly, the, we have, um, there is one statement around working towards achieving racial and social equity and health outcomes so that all members, so that members of all communities can live long, healthy lives. To me, this is a great aspirational statement. I want to see something more explicit. I want to see more to that. And I want to see what, um, specific things. We did talk about, um, uh, air quality and arterials and housing near arterials. Um, I know that's come up in other sections as well. So would love to explore that with you all. Um, we also, um, we also talked about and curious about the land use section, um, what considerations there were around floodplain management, sea level rise, uh, buffers, um, managed retreat, anything like that, if that came up, um, for any of you all in that section. And obviously, when we get the chance to have more than, I also had a personal emergency in the last week. So our, our team in particular got hit kind of hard this week. Um, so we're, we're looking forward to, to diving into this a little bit deeper. Rose, is there anything else I missed?
Not that I can think of, no.
Oh, there was mention of, um, green stormwater infrastructure as well. I know that came up earlier as someone, someone else had asked about that, so.
All right. Thank you both. Um, I think what we'll do is go to Andy, who will speak to his review of the plan of for, um, for references to public health, uh, again, initial thoughts. And then, um, we will take the remainder of the meeting for, uh, follow up questions regarding the climate environment, part one and part two and, uh, public health. And, uh, then the remaining time we will take just to have any other wrap up questions, we will reschedule the draft E I S staff overview, um, to another time so as to not cut short this discussion. Thank you. And this was Vanessa Staff. So, um, turning it over to Andy.
Um, thank you. And I'm just looking at the slide for the first time. I've been traveling all week and have not gotten as much done as I had hoped and coordinating has not been real easy. But anyway, um, but thank you, uh, for getting this slide up. I'm gonna want to point to three of the bullets on there and then can just very briefly mention the others. The, the first one is the number two there uh, came from a discussion with the King County Health, the Seattle County Health Department. And that is, what do you do with conflicting goals? We have a goal that affordable housing should not be built in high pollution areas. We have a goal that affordable housing should be built near transit and yet some high capacity transit, link light rail in particular, uh, follows a number of busy roads. It follows I five, it follows parts of, um, outside of Seattle, um, uh, parts of I ninety, parts of four oh five and so forth. And so how do you get affordable housing that is both near the transit and away from these pollution generating areas? And I don't have an easy answer for it. You end up with some kind of a balance, but I think it needs to at least be addressed. And as mentioned, the health department is very interested and concerned on how to do that balance of for affordable housing, um, near transit and away from, from bad pollution. Um, second one I want to mention is, let's see, at the very bottom of the screen on health promoting buildings, there is a standard there and I don't have the number right in front of me that encourages green buildings, which is, and they should be incentivized. And I think that is terrific. But we also have a set of certification standards for health promoting buildings. And the two major ones are fit well and well. Um, disclosure, I was actually involved in fit well and some of its development when I worked for the Centers for Disease Control, it's the federal government, uh, generated, uh, health promoting standard. Well, is another set of standards from, from private industry. And there, I think there may also be other standards. It's an issue of if we want to encourage green standards, we could also be encouraging health promoting, uh, building certification standards. So again, something to, to explore further, but I think it would be a step forward if we could encourage that. Um, the third one I'll mention actually is not on the list. I'm not even sure which list I had it from. But that is earthquake response. And I've seen quite a few, and again, I have not read everything in this. I'm still want to spend some more time on it. But most of what I saw related to earthquakes was more resilience, seismic retrofits and so forth. But what we, and, and, you know, um, getting ready for it, but not the actual response. And so I, I would like to see, um, in the, the plan, you know, what, what is our readiness when, you know, I five collapses through the city or whatever? Um, how are we prepared to, to do that response? So it, it's obviously valuable to be prepared, um, and, and, you know, do some resilience, um, which is, I think reasonably well mentioned in there. There's a lot on climate change and climate change resilience. And I think some of the earthquake issues could go in some of those same sections. Again, the exact wording is something I just think we ought to look more at. So, um, they're, they're the three bigger ones. The others, just to mention briefly, public health, as mentioned, is rather scattered. So it, it did take some looking to try to find any of it. Uh, noise may be underrepresented, but really can be quite an issue, particularly affordable housing areas. Um, you know, again, affordable housing near a highway has both air pollution and noise issue. Uh, parking, nice political hot potato, but you know, could we take leadership and say, we don't want any minimum parking anywhere in the city? Again, not, not easily done, but I, I think for long term planning, um, but could, could make some sense. And then looking at things like how, how well the integration is occurring between school planning, which is generally done separately. And again, there are some things within the plan about that, but just making sure that the school planning and for that matter, park planning are, are both done in, in appropriate collaboration with the overall, um, comprehensive plan. So there are the major issues to, to start with. Lots of smaller ones that will be parts of future discussions.
So that conclude, this is Vanessa. That concludes, uh, the, um, climate, environment and public health, uh, small group takeaways, initial takeaways. So, um, I'd like to suggest, um, we open it up for questions specific to those two elements or that one element and that one issue. Um, and then, uh, next weekend have a broader conversation, takeaways, just based on today's conversation for the next, uh, right up until five thirty. And in case you missed it, I suggested that we actually reschedule the draft E I S, um, overview to, uh, to a meeting hopefully next week. So please put your name in the chat and David will call upon, uh, people who have questions.
Don't have to be questions. They can be comments, observations.
Thank you.
Et cetera. Michaela?
I just wanted to say kudos. That is a lot of content that you had to read, even if that was in one element. It's so diverse and wide ranging. Jeez, I don't envy that, your assignments. Um, Andy, I'm struggling with this tension around the similar tension that you've identified and the public health identified around locating, you know, making sure that folks that were maximizing, um, access to frequent and high capacity transit and locating housing opportunities near that, but also minimizing health impacts and other quality of life impacts like noise by concentrating dense multifamily housing along arterials. We have all of these residentially zoned areas that don't have a lot of density in them. And I've just been sort of trying to think like, what is the alternative? Like, if we try and address this attention, like what, what do those solutions actually look like? And have you in your discussions with public health or kind of just your work doing, doing this kind of work across the nation? Do you have suggestions there in terms of how we, how we try and balance meeting both goals?
Um, the discussions I've heard have been such like, you know, what is the buffer that you want between a, you know, a busy road and the affordable housing? Now, if you have the, the, the road and then the transit and put the affordable housing on the other side of the transit, so then the transit acts as a buffer from the road, that helps some. But it also means that you're not able to put affordable housing close to transit on the other side of it. You know, it's sort of, it, it limits where you can put the affordable housing. It also says things like you want a 500 or a thousand foot buffer for the air pollution. And there's, you know, various opinions on what the ideal buffer is. And essentially you end up with a balance. Well, we need the affordable housing more than, you know, if it turns out the 500 foot buffer, you know, lets you build a whole lot more housing and the thousand foot just cuts into how much you end up with a compromise. So I'm not saying what is the ideal compromise. But I, I think, you know, that is the message, that conflict exists. There's no perfect solution. And you look for the best combination you can get. But, you know, we clearly need the affordable housing. We do want affordable housing near transit. Now, then there's a little bit of mitigation on that and it's not complete and it doesn't necessarily help the, well, it may help noise as well as air pollution. And that is by 10 years from now, we will presumably have more electric vehicles. So the amount of, um, air pollution will be less, the amount of noise may be less. Uh, roads still generate a certain amount of, of, you know, tire shredding and other things. So it's not, not perfect, but it should at least be a little better once we have primarily electric vehicles on the road. Uh, Rick?
Thanks, David. This is Rick Muller. Thanks, Andy. You actually, you actually answered one of my questions, which is what will be the positive impact of electrification versus the remaining environmental issues of, I'm assuming not just tires, but also brake pads and heavy metals and all of that other airborne stuff. But I also wanted to go back to a comment that, that Jamie made. And Jamie, I, I know this is your area of expertise and embodied carbon is unbelievably complicated. And the comprehensive plan is not going to untangle this complication. But I do appreciate this question of a lot of focus on embodied carbon in buildings. And I have a number of colleagues who are experts in embodied carbon in buildings. But if you take, for example, a mixed use multifamily building and it has a sizable parking garage below grade, very often that parking garage is a substantial portion of that building's embodied carbon. but that is in fact a transportation policy issue, not a building policy issue. And, and so I think it's really important that the plan be clear about what policies can have the most impact, even though the embodied carbon consequences of those part, of those policies might not be immediately apparent. In other words, it's more than just tailpipe emissions. There's, there's, there's a whole lot more entail and consequences of different, carbon consequences of different transportation policies.
Thanks, Rick. Nick, you had a follow-up related to air quality?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the discussion just on how we choose to cite housing and affordable housing as it relates to the height of some of the arterials, also I-5, areas where we've got a lot of traffic and air pollution. I mean, it's unfortunate that the solution isn't just to eliminate that, that pollution-generating source and kind of reduce the traffic volumes to help kind of curtail some of those emissions. But I am curious, Andy or others, if there are other strategies? You had mentioned the buffer as one, so that's just eliminate citing of housing or affordable housing near these pollution-generating sources. But other kind of mitigation strategies that you're aware of? I, I can't imagine it's in anyone's interest to tightly seal the building. We're talking about residential units. But is that a strategy that people consider? Or knowing pollution kind of isn't going to travel up so, so high? Is it citing more office development and then having maybe 10, the 10th floor and above is residential? Are those effective strategies? Or what have you found or others in kind of researching this topic?
Of, of what I have seen, I've seen talk of just better filtration systems in the buildings themselves. That can help. You're mentioning using higher floors. I have not heard a lot about that, but that, that could help, except some of the pollutants are, are rising. Another one I saw was just which side of the building has more openings, and the, the, the more that it opens away from the sources of the noise and away from the pollution, more of the fresh air could come, and less noise come on the side away from where it's being generated. So some of it is the design of the building itself to put less exposure toward the side where it's being generated.
Okay, could I add something to that? So, so, yeah, there are a component, a critical component of, of high-performance building, and, and this is gradually actually becoming, will be, will be part of the building code. As we, the energy code, as we move forward, is energy recovery ventilation. The idea, we can discuss the merits of this, but the idea of energy recovery ventilation is that you're actually not opening doors and windows that the, the building, the ventilation within the building is happening through a mechanism that exchanges energy between the air leaving the building and the air coming into the building. And you can couple this with ventilation systems that can pretty dramatically reduce the particulates that are inside the building. But of course, this means you're living in a sealed building. And we live in a climate, particularly in the summertime, where people are going to open their windows.
It looked like.
With some during forest fire season, when you're happy to have the sealed building, if it's, well, the air is well-controlled.
So it looked like Rose and Jamie had responses to Nick's question, and then Julio's had his hand up for a while, so let's go in that order.
Okay, so my thoughts in terms of mitigation strategies, so obviously not complete, but outside, we could consider promoting types of green infrastructure, like green walls and the like, that help disrupt, like, where noise travels, how dust travels, and how air currents, like, swirl. Is, is my very yellow, yellow tech way of trying to describe that. And then also, I, I just want to add that I get nervous when people talk about things like sealing buildings and having that be the solution, and not considering where transit centers are in relation to high-pollution generating corridors, because very often, the very same people who are going to be in those affordable housing units are also going to need to be at those transit centers and like breathing in all that pollution and dust. So I think when we think about how to not only cite buildings, but also what to do about where transit is in relation to pollution-generating corridors, is also considering mitigation strategies outside, because no one wants to be trapped in a building all the time. It's just not, people are going to be going outside.
Especially kids.
And, and if I can add one quick thing to your comment there, there's a term from disaster repairers called passive survivability. And it means when all systems fail, can you stay in your building? A totally sealed building that was dependent on a whole lot of ventilating systems actively working with power, that building does not work. You want a building that, that people can survive in when all systems fail.
Jamie?
Yeah, so the, I, I think both, both Andy and Rose kind of touched on some of this. Some is in building design and filtration systems, what kind of HVAC systems they have. During the winter, just realistically, most people are not opening their windows in the middle of the winter.
Jamie, you froze.
Uh-oh. While she's thawing out, maybe we'd go to Julio, who I think was on the same topic, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. I just want.
Oh, sorry.
Should I go?
Yes, please.
All right, I just wanted to share that about four or five years ago, I actually had a tour of the, some of the buildings built a near harbor view in the new version of the community housing that existed before. And even at that time, buildings were already designed, and these buildings are four, five years old in such a way that you could only open the windows a very narrow space. And the thinking was that the internal filtration air in the building would be fresh enough and healthy enough that it will keep people more healthy than if they were able to open their windows fully. And I do have to tell you that for me, this was a shocking idea, that living in the northwest, one area in which we enjoy nature so much and in which we view our surroundings as healthy and so connected to the idea of open air, we were already designing buildings that were pretty much meant to be a bubble inside of which people could be, we assume, better than outside. So this is actually something that has already been put in practice, at least in the last five years in the Seattle area.
Well, we've really hit a vein here. So Deanna, was your question related to this, this thread?
Yeah, and what I think, I think, one, there's consensus even going on the chat that, you know, this topic created interest and might require a separate conversation. But as we're framing that opportunity to discuss this further, I like us as a commission to think, it seems like I'm hearing the conversation, a lot of it sounds at a level of policy guidance that is more at the building code, code level or zoning legislation, and want to make sure we're focusing and grounding our policy language recommendation for what Andy surfaced, which is the inconsistency of the two goals, right? Of near transit but away from emission sources. So just wanted to offer that we, you know, as we pause this conversation, perhaps, of course, others are going to weigh in, to think about what is the key language recommendation to ground this that gives the teeth to the policy at the appropriate level where building codes and zoning gets to defined.
Good point. Let's see, Matt, you had something to add on buildings?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if anyone wants to talk about it, it's the, and offline. It's, it's not that these buildings have no operable windows, it's that they have active, active HVAC systems that also filter air. So as an architect, our practice involves better-performing buildings that are tighter, that have better, better air infiltrate, or air filtration systems. And that's, that's not, that's a great development, not a bad development. So I'm happy to talk to anyone about that issue separately, but it's not that, that these buildings are, you cannot access the outdoors. Two separate, two separate things.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
You need to finish your thought, you're good.
I would love to finish my thought.
Okay.
Yes, so I used to work at the intersection of air quality, indoor air quality and energy efficiency. And, and I, I just went back and re-reviewed, like, there is a, a smoke-specific section in the climate resilience section. And I just noted that a lot of the, a lot of the language in there is mostly related to building design for extreme heat. And so I think it might be worth us exploring, looking at adding something around encouraging building design related to air quality, and what we could put within there, whether it's like, you know, turning away from pollution sources or HVAC systems, whatever. We don't want to go too into the details, right? Because it's com-plan language, high level, but I think we could add something there. The other thing is that there is language that's in the introduction that I put in the chat, but is not necessarily outlined in a policy statement around using vegetation, tree canopy, and green walls and things like that to also support better air quality in those neighborhoods. So that's also something we could suggest, including.
Okay, my fellow power nerds, I think Michaela had something, and then we need to wrap it up with some next steps, and I don't think we have any more public comment, is that right, Vanessa?
That is correct.
Okay, so Michaela, and then Vanessa.
All right, I get the final word.
Oh, did I do that? Dang it.
I just, I just want to frame out another option and another way of thinking about the strategy of putting a multifamily housing along arterials, which is, is this perpetuating our patterns of exclusion? If you look at the corridor strategy, these corridors are going along the areas that have been formerly zoned, single-family residential. And do not people who rent, who live in multifamily buildings deserve to be able to have great places to live? Is there not another solution that we could be thinking about? Is near transit but away from the arterial, maybe a couple of blocks off? Maybe there's another way that we think about this, where we punch into our neighborhoods a little bit more, just to sort of provide more housing choices for people. Renters deserve choices too, and their renter, their options shouldn't just be concentrated along arterials. So I look forward to discussing this more with y'all. This is a hairy policy problem, and one we've had a really thoughtful discussion today.
We're not, we're not going to punch in the neighborhoods, we will insinuate.
Oh, my gosh, it was like the worst phrase, yes. We will not integrate, I don't know, I don't know what the right word is, but.
It's punch.
Fan a little bit.
Okay, Vanessa, take us home.
Okay, this is Vanessa Murdock, Executive Director for the Commission. I want to thank all of the commissioners who have really scrambled these last nine days, not only to do your individual review of individual and selected elements, but then to convene as small groups and try to identify common themes. This was a heavy lift. I want to reiterate that these are initial comments from you all, and that I really appreciate hearing from you all and listening and having the opportunity for you to hear from your colleagues on elements and portions of the draft plan that you may not have had the opportunity to review yet. Not to worry, we've got six more weeks to the day to continue to discuss and finesse and develop a thoughtful and thorough comment letter on the plan. We are dedicating all of our meetings for the next six weeks to really digging into this plan and, and being a value add to the City of Seattle residents, as well as policy decision-makers to, to take this plan to the next level. I also do want to commend the plan itself. It's out there, there's a lot of good in the plan, and there's room for improvement, and the diversity of Planning Commission in terms of lived-life experience and professional, and professional experience and other experiences will really add to a rich and robust letter. And I appreciate the work you've put in thus far, as well as, as the work that we have ahead of us the next six weeks. So buckle up, thanks again.
All right, thanks, everybody, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone.